Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM, February 22nd, and I am going to call the City Council Meeting to Order. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I see everybody is here, but I'm going to do a quick roll call for the record. Councilman Owen.
Present.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond, Kestee, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Kestee.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
Perfect, okay. And then moving on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Did I have a second? Oh, thank you, Councilman Owen. So I have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to consent agenda, items 1 through 11. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. We have tonight, actually, a wonderful presentation, and this is the second time that I have had the honor of giving an award to somebody who really has served not only her community, but the, but City Hall. Joanne Lazaron, if you could, would come forward, please.
So, um, Joanne deserves more than just a simple thank you because she has given not only of her talents and her skills, but also of herself. She is passionate about the city and cares deeply about the employees. And that's something that you just can't measure in an award or state in words. That's something that you just know is there in the heart. And I want you to know that, Joanne, from my part, I greatly appreciate the fact that when I called him, I said, "Would you come back? He did such a wonderful job with the Wellness Committee. We are needing, needing someone to come back. You didn't establish." You did that. And now we have a great program that's in place. We have lots of excitement surrounding it. We have Katie, who's taken copious notes and watched Joanne and worked with Joanne, and she's going to be taking it over. So, Joanne, I want to thank you on behalf of myself and from the city for doing this. And I still owe you lunch, by the way. And I will do that. And I have one more thing I want to give you. So we always give out their crystal eggs, and I'm going to leave it in the case here because it's easier to read. It's clear. But it says, "Joanne Lazaron, Wellness Coordinator, senior senior woolly, January 22 of February 23. In grateful appreciation for your dedication, commitment to excellence, and a warm and gracious heart. Your leadership and work with the Wellness Committee has established a strong and dynamic program. You leave us much healthier as an organization with appreciation and respect from all of us." And Joanne. Thanks. I want to say thank you. It was my pleasure. It was wonderful being part of your city team for the year 2022 on the Wellness and Safety Committee. And I am thrilled to say that your wellness program is on its way already with Katie's leadership and all the other members of the Safety and Wellness Program. They do it together. And your team, assistant mayor too, Charlie, with big time involvement in this program, Mark and Bill. So we have a little bit of everybody on that team, and they are just doing a wonderful job. And thank you again.
It's actually what makes this community so special are people like you, Joanne, who's so willing to volunteer and give of yourself. She also serves as a volunteer on the Chamber Board. And so the beautiful Christmas trees that we see up, the branches that we see with the lights, that's Joanne. And yeah, and the parade, she's been a part of that. So, thank you. Okay, moving on with city administrator reports.
Mayor Johnson, members of the council, just one item on tonight. And that's just a heads up that we had a discussion about fire department staffing at the Finance and Information Technology Committee meeting this evening. And we will be coming to the full council at the work session, the first work session in March, which is just a week away. So just letting you know, we're coming to talk with you about fire department staffing.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Councilman Owen. Council report, do you have a council report?
Yeah, I got, I wanted to, I gotta, I gave out some brochures. Everybody has one. And this is a fundraiser for Meals on Wheels. And I guess it's, it's really a nice meal. Comes with a couple of glasses of wine. You can buy more if you want. But it's, it's a good deal. And if you can make it, well, it would be greatly appreciated. And it would really, really help the people that sponsor this. If you can go, it'll really be for good purposes.
So, Councilman Owen, I know that you and Virginia, you guys are really great supporters of the Senior Center. Have you two had opportunity to serve the meals with this program, Meals on Wheels? Do you want to talk a little bit about it? Or?
Meals on Wheels? Oh, it's, it's a wonderful program. And when you, if you can volunteer and do it once, you'll, you'll see how much it means to some of those people that are housebound and they have no, no mate and very little family. And they, they don't have any contact except with you. And they want to talk, they want to talk. And it's sad because you've got to keep moving because you have, you know, hot meals. And some of them, I would go back and visit with them. They're just sweet people. And there's two or three of them. They always had a little piece of candy for me when I brought their meals. It just tears your heart out to see some of them. So it's really a good program. And the way they need all the support they can get because they don't, they don't get a lot of money. And they have to, have to have these little funds to keep it going. So, yeah, it's, it's great. It would be nice if you could go down sometime and one of these volunteers that take the meals out and go around with them. And then you'll see some of those people. They're pretty, they're pretty bad, and they're dependent on that. It means a lot, probably the only meal they get.
I'm going to have a chance to do that on the 22nd of next month. I'm going to be able to do that, go out and see. Yeah, so grateful for that.
I, I need to do it more, but. Other stuff going. It's hard, it's hard to, you've got to be, if you volunteer, you've got to be there, you know?
Yeah.
You can only volunteer and do it one day a week or whatever. I don't have a tough time keeping volunteers there. But I would, I would recommend, if you ever have a chance to go around with one of those volunteers, do it because you'll see some of those people and how they appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for reading this. For those of you who are in the audience or online, it's, it is Skagit County Meals on Wheels fundraiser, and it's March 23rd, which is a Thursday, at 6:00 PM. And it'll be held at Bertelson Winery. Okay, moving on to Councilman McGoffin.
Thank you. I have no report this evening.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
No report this evening, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Burns.
Sorry, I got a couple of things for you. Stuff the Bus will be held Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00 at 1:30 East Fairhaven Avenue in Burlington. And they wanted me to point out that Dick's Burger Truck will be there, and you better show up early if you want something to eat because apparently they run out quick. And also, Charlie and I traveled to Olympia last week for the Association of Washington City's Action Days. We were able to lobby all of our representatives on behalf of our police department, as well as other things that we needed for the city. We were looking for some money for the John Liner and Trail Road corridor project, as well as for a vehicle storage building. It was good to be able to visit with our representatives and get a chance to meet some of the other people from different cities in the, in the state and get some other ideas for what we can do to help our community. So that was a good experience. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestee.
Okay, so I just have a bit of history for tonight because 116 years ago, on this exact same date, the City Council passed a curfew ordinance. A bell was to ring at 9:00 PM each night to alert children that they were to be at their homes.
So I thought that was pretty neat.
Thank you. Councilman Allen.
Mayor, I cannot top the last item. So anyway, we're the last council person, so nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca.
Madam Mayor, I propose bringing the bell back. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. So we had the Finance Committee, like Charlie had mentioned, and it was good discussion. I'm looking forward to following up on that discussion with the Fire Department Levy, Lee, LID on the strategic planning. I will be out of state during that meeting, so I'll join in through Zoom, though. And I know that's always a little difficult, and I apologize for that, but it is what it is.
It is what it is. And thank you for making the efforts to join in. I have just one item tonight. We are going to be hosting a town hall, March 11th. It's a Saturday from 3:00 to 4:30. Senator Wagner, Representative Lowe, and Representative Eslick will be here, and they'll be discussing the legislation and the topics and the policies that have been going, that they've been working on down there. Afterwards, I will have the opportunity, or actually Nathan's going to help me, take the opportunity to give our representatives a tour of our new Public Works Building. So that'll be exciting. So, all right, so if you want to mark your calendar for that. All right, let's see here. Moving on to public comments. It is 6:12. I see someone coming forward. Please state your name and your address, and maybe keep it to three minutes. Thank you. Perfect, yes, yes.
Do you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Dave Button, 9403 Pierce Lane, Cedar Woolly. Is that all I need for introduction?
Sounds good.
Couple things. I lived at the homeless center last year in Burlington. Wow, what a great place to help people out. With the cold weather coming, they're filled up every night. What are we doing for the homeless in Cedar Woolly?
Well, I know there's a couple of places that have warming shelters.
Pardon?
There's a couple of places that have warming shelters.
Where are they? Because I have some friends who are looking for a place. It's cold. They've been staying in my bus.
Oh, okay. I would check with CI Church to see if they're doing a warming center. Do you know if they are? And Bethlehem is as well, Bethlehem Lutheran Church.
Okay, yeah, I saw that in the paper. The library, oh, what a phenomenal library. I go there every day from 10:00 to 6:00. And normally, there's nobody there at 10:00. And it's pretty much a nursery. A lot of little kids, and there's just a variety of things to do there. And then meetings. Why can't we open it up a little longer, like till 8:00? The working guys don't have time to come in because they close at 6:00. Can't you go 10:00 to 8:00, or are you short of money?
That's a topic to take up with the director of the library. We own the building, but the library district runs the program. So Jean Williams would be.
You own the building, but they run the program. So who do I talk to?
It's a great partnership. It's Jean Williams at the library.
Pardon?
Jean Williams.
Okay. Why can't you open it for the homeless?
You'll have to take that up with her.
Okay, okay, all right, great. What are you doing with the old library?
The YMCA is in there, and we have a youth program going on there.
I've been there, I don't see anybody there.
From 2:30 to 6:00, or 6:30, something like that, five days a week.
Okay. Now, your code for trailers. I'm curious. What I find is you get to stay a month, 30 days, on private property. I have a friend that said I could move my trailer up there. How long can I stay before I have to move?
So that, so you're asking a lot of questions that have to do with some of the policies that we have here.
Yeah.
And that is, is online, but also, I don't know if John, after the meeting, could you meet with this gentleman and actually answer some of the questions that he may have regarding the trailer, how long he can stay, all of that? So our director of building, John Coleman, he's in the blue shirt right here. He'll meet with you after council meeting.
You can't tell me no?
Well, this is a public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not, it's not really a Q and A, and usually I don't answer, but.
That's what I'm doing, I'm making a comment.
Yeah, perfect. And John will, John will join you afterwards.
I'm giving the, I hope the police get overtime because they're chasing me all over town. I parked my trailer, you know who I am. I parked my trailer on private property over by Puget Sound Energy. I checked with the, the boundaries, and it was totally in private property. Three policemen came by and nailed a sticker to my car and my RV, and I can't even get them off. Can't you get stickers that are a little easier to get off rather than tear your windshield up? Can't you park on private property for a couple of days?
That was public, that was public property.
Okay, I mean, I mean, public property. It's public property, and I've been hassled on public property. Why?
So again, if you want to take that up with our police department, you can do that.
I have tried to, but I don't get anywhere.
So you're asking questions, this is public comment, and your three minutes are up.
Pardon?
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
I didn't hear you.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Can I get three more?
No, we're going to move on with the meeting.
Anything else coming on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? And online, is there anybody online? I'll watch for a hand to go up or a mic to come on. Okay, seeing none. It is 6:17, and I am going to close. Public comment, and we're going to move on to, we do not have any unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new business. And the first one that we have on hand here is the Sap Road, and Mr. Freiberger, that is you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. You've heard me before on this subject, but Sap Road from Highway 20 to East Jones Road is proposed for closure. And we've taken this through the process as we've been able to determine in consultation with the city attorney. And we posted the site. We have a public notice that went out on that. And so we're ready for you to act on that tonight if you're so inclined. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Freiberger?
I just had one. Is there any plans in the future for that road, for anything, just out of curiosity?
So the main plan for that road is for it to be retained as a shared use path. It is part of our path system. So we, we do plan on continuing to maintain it. It also has a, a PUD water main underneath of it, so it would be retained as an easement even without that. But as far as the road's concerned, no. As I mentioned in the memorandum, once the Jones John Liner undercrossing it is in place, it wouldn't be safe to have a, a vehicle access to this section of the roadway. So it basically will cease.
I mean, like, as far as, like, walking trail or for, like, bicycles and stuff like that?
Yes, it will be retained as a shared use path for bicycles.
Awesome, that's exciting, I know. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? For anyone? Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Okay, just to be a devil's advocate, John, why, why do you want an answer on the first reading? Or why is it so critical?
Well, it's not. You certainly could continue it. The main thing we're trying to do is, as mentioned in the memorandum and our previous discussions, is to prevent trash dumping on the roadway and also parking and abandoning vehicles, those kind of things. So.
What are the problems down there other than it's a two-bicycle trestle? I understand that. But I understand there's a lot of homeless trash and all that. Is that a fact?
Yeah, yeah. Trash dumping on there has been a pretty continuous problem for quite some time. Charlie can speak to that if he chooses to. He walks that way and rides his bike pretty regularly. And I go down there occasionally and look at it. And we have mattresses dump their trash, you know? We've had vehicles in there, so it's just an ongoing thing.
We've had a lot of calls, too, a lot of complaints.
And how fast would action be taken on the closure?
Well, Nathan, Nathan has, will have to order the bollards we need to put in, but I imagine within a couple of weeks we'll have that done.
Thank you.
Now, the other issue we've had there, quite frankly, it's mentioned in the memo also, is we've had people cutting through the double-barrel barbecue parking lot to get up to Jones Road and using that as an access. And that's not good for them, and it's not good for the city either to have people using that as a bypass.
Okay, does anyone want to take, do you have a question?
I just wanted to add that that's probably one of the number-one things, complaints that I get from people, and word one is trash on that road. So it's a continuous problem. So I think having it closed off is going to help.
Thank you. So what's the council's pleasure? Do you want to move forward with this or bring it back?
I'll make a motion to move forward with it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kestee, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you, motion carries. Item number two, Approval of the Supplemental One to Consultant Agreement, 2022 PS-09, with Reichart and EB Engineering. This is for a revised design, Mr. Freiberger.
Yes, and as you know, we have been going through a process, a scope change request to the Transportation Improvement Board to modify the design for the Township Street SR9 McGargle-John Liner intersection from a signal to a roundabout. Council's been quite involved in that as we've gone through the process. TIB did in January approve the additional $1.5 million to make this possible. Our additional match requirement was $170-some thousand, relatively minor for that, to go, to get that much additional work. And so we're ready to move forward with the revised design, and this supplement will cover the additional costs to revise the design. Basically, we already had some design expended on the signal. We had to do that in order to prepare the intersection control evaluation that DOT used as a crudle to entice us to revise the intersection design. So those, those funds basically had already been spent. And so now Reichart and EB is ready to move on with the design of the traffic roundabout itself. And about half of the cost, if you look in the details, is for the additional right-of-way services required for the total takes that will be involved in this. And then the rest of it is actually for some additional engineering expenses. So it appears, and I discussed this in the memorandum, that we're still okay in our overall budget. The Transportation Improvement Board does limit the total for design and construction engineering to 30% of the project. And at this point, even with this change, we'll remain within that, that total budget. So I think we're okay to move forward with this without any risk right now of additional costs for the city other than we've already approved in the scope change request. So our recommendation is to approve the supplement number one. Authorize me to sign that, and we would appreciate a motion to that effect.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Freiberger?
I just have one. Have we, have we reached out to people within the vicinity that may be affected by this yet? And have they received notifications or letters of this?
Not as yet. One of the early work items that's in Reichart and EB's agreement, it's actually listed as a line item, is to prepare a letter of introduction to all of the affected property owners and to give them the contact information. We have a real estate specialty firm that, similar to United, that we've been using for the Tuttle acquisition that will, the first thing we have to do is prepare appraisals. But we will notify them by letter first that this is coming and give them an idea of what the process is and introduce them to the real estate agent that they'll be working with. And, and so that'll be coming up shortly.
Yeah, is there, they probably have that ability, but a way to get a little bit more personal with them since it might not be a whole bunch of people down there that may or may not be affected, but more than just a letter in the mail, but maybe just, like, a visit or something at some point that says, "Hey, you know, from the city. I'm not sure if that could be a good idea." It's not a lot of people affected, but they would be very much so impacted.
Right. I, I think the letter is probably the good way to start and then follow up with a visit. The letter will have a contact in them, in that for them to contact. And my name will be in there as well, that we can talk about the project and the ramifications of all of this. So, yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions, comments? And what is the council's pleasure? Do you want to move forward with this?
It sounds like this was time-sensitive for you, Mark, to get it going.
It is, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve 2022-PS-09.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, to approve the supplemental one to the consultant agreement of 2022 PS-09 with Reichart and EB for revision and design of the roundabout intersection and authorize its Public Works Director, Mark Freiberger, to sign. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
And then moving on to item number three, which is Approval of the Amended Purchase Order, 2022 PO19 KCDA and Related Change Order One to Contract 2023 PW04 with Northwest Playground to Add Installation of Playground Systems Equipment and Benches for Memorial Park. Mr. Freiberger?
Thank you, Mayor. So we've talked about the Memorial Park improvements in the past a number of times. Our original intention was to try to save some money on the budget for that by doing some of the work with our own forces. The size of the contract work, it just is, is precluded, it precludes us to do that by state law. We can do what's called day labor work with our own forces, up to about $118,000 under the current state rules. Above that, it has to be bid. And so we've had to change course on this a bit midstream. And I'm sorry I didn't catch this sooner. This, this is something the city's been doing a lot of over the years, sometimes getting pretty close to that limit. This one clearly pushes us over that. When we solicited or requested prices through our state bid process for the playground equipment, they actually bid that or provided a proposal that would include installation. We didn't elect to do that in our original contract with them, thinking we could do it. When it became clear to me that we simply couldn't, we went back to this. And since it's under the state, state bid process, it's a simple matter of amending their contract, which is what we're proposing to do tonight, to add in for the installation work. This will include installing the playground equipment and furnishing and installing the, the special bark that goes into the facility and the things that go along with that. So I've also talked a bit about the budget and the impact of that. What we've identified to do on this is use some additional ARPA funds beyond what you'd originally allocated for the project to make up for this. And the related project that you will see, likely the next council meeting, maybe the second one in March, which would be for installation of the sidewalk work. We also were planning to do that work, but again, it's the cost estimate for that is over our, our day labor rate. And so that's being bid right now and be coming to you. I'm going to be on vacation the first meeting in March, so it will be the second meeting in March.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Freiberger?
I have a question. So it's a, it's a dollar amount that they're looking for, and then you have to bid it out? Is, is that correct?
In terms of the, the rules that the state has for what you can do as an agency, we are limited to a certain amount to be able to do that. The KCDA contract, state contract, fulfills the purposes of competitive bidding. We do that as, as much as we can. It's generally speaking, a more economical and timely way to handle this kind of project. There are specialty contractors that do playground equipment, and Northwest Playground is, is the one that KCDA has under contract. We contract through KCDA. They hire Northwest Playground. That's why you see in here, in addition to a KCDA purchase order modification, you also see a, a contract amendment for the separate contract with Northwest Playground. They're two different documents, but they accomplish the same thing. And that's how we're doing this, proposing to do that. We could bid it out, but there's only a few contractors that actually do it. And the state bid process that we're utilizing fulfills all the requirements of competitive bidding.
And otherwise, it could have been done in-house, if it wasn't over a certain amount of money?
Up to an eighteen, up to $118,500. It, it changes some every year. There is an escalation clause on that. You can do that. And we have a former auditor sitting next to me. She can clarify on that if you would like.
Well, I just have a question. We did reach out to the state auditor's office to ask if we could do the work ourselves. There, they have a bidding and procurement specialist who got back to us. And the short of it is, they said no, that we could not do it ourselves. If we did do it ourselves, we would be at risk to receive an audit finding for not following state law.
So we couldn't break it up into two different increments of money to make it less, so that there could be two phases, and then we could do it?
Yeah, they, they actually see that possibility. They call it bid splitting, and that's illegal, actually.
Oh, oh, good to know.
Mr. Allen?
Mark, I have a question. I haven't read my packet since Sunday, so my memory's really short. What is the approved, approval of the amended purchase, dollar-wise?
It's $137,541.90, including sales tax. And that's the installation of the playground equipment and all the benches, and putting in the playground bark that I talked to you about earlier.
And then what are we probably looking at sidewalks, et cetera?
About $100,000.
About a quarter million, or a little less. I mean, for both combined?
Both combined add about $340,000. There's actually some other smaller things we're doing, too. The restroom was the third thing that we needed to do. We've, we've built our own restroom several times, and when Nathan was assuming we were going to do this, he just figured he could do that again. But because it's within the project boundary that we're doing, it's considered part of the project, even though we're doing it as a separate contract. So it's just one of those nuances that we actually got just caught in that, you know, we could have waited.
Is this going to take it up closer to $500,000, or stay at $340,000?
Well, the $340 includes the impacts of all three of those things we're having to handle with contractors rather than do ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Mark, that's just materials, right? Or does it, obviously, it doesn't include the playground equipment, but does it include the bark and the concrete and?
It includes all the things to, to install the playground equipment. So it would include concrete around the bases of the swinging toys and stuff like that, and bark. And I don't know if it includes, there's a gravel layer that goes in there, too, that, that's all pretty much in it.
So the total for the playground equipment with installation is about $950,000?
Well, the, the new contract with, with Northwest Playground, it went from, I have it in here somewhere, it went from $500 and something to $6 something, you know, you know, the additional $137,000. That was, the work that Northwest Playground is doing is they're, they're building the splash pad complete with all the equipment, the wiring, all of that stuff that goes in on that was the biggest part of their contract. And then the furnishing of the playground equipment was in their original contract, and now this adds in the installation of playground equipment and the benches.
Thank you. And then with the bathroom facilities, that has to be included through, through the city, right? Or, or through the standard septic system? I know that there's areas around here that are actually exploring, you know, toilet systems. I'm specifically thinking the firelight from Sedron has toilet development. Are we able to work with those guys and see if they would be, or is that, is that, I don't know, conflict of interest or whatnot?
Well, this is going to be one of the standard bathrooms that Nathan's kind of come up with over the last few years, pretty bulletproof.
Something that's, yeah, that makes sense, but something that is unique to our community, something that our community has developed and has put on the market and is a revolutionary technology, would make sense to have that within our community if it's possible. I don't even know if that would be, or if they have that, that even somewhat available. But I don't know if that's something that would be worth at least exploring.
A little late in the process for that. And, and, you know, for a simple bathroom like this, one of the things that happens with us, we have an ongoing vandalism problem in town. We had another case of somebody trying to set fire of our Binger and Park restroom recently. It's very difficult for them to burn them down now because of the way we've designed them and built them, all the stainless steel fixtures in there. But somebody figured out a way. They started a fire, lit the toilet paper on fire, and that's usually what they do. And, yeah. So we need to keep them rather simple, and this is the other reason that we're doing caretakers for all of our sites because of that factor. Even with the person, even with people there, sometimes they'll sneak in and do their mischief. So it's just the reality of the times we live in, unfortunately.
Thank you very much for answering all this. Appreciate that.
Okay. So looking at this, is this something that the council wants to move forward with? If so, I need a motion.
Is this something you need an answer on today? I mean, there's a lot of first reads in here, and I think a little bit ago, we talked about not doing first reads. But I mean, we could explore that if you feel that's necessary, but I think we did discuss that first-read clause at one time.
So that's council's pleasure, of course. On this one, I do recommend we go ahead. It's time-sensitive since we're trying to finish this project by, by June 1st is what we're shooting for. So we really need to get moving on all of this stuff regarding the park. So you'll see some others and be able to have that same observation on those when I come back in March. We'll have the sidewalks and, and the restroom facility as well for you to look at.
I understand. I'll make a motion to approve the number-one consultant agreement with Richmond. Or no, that's the roundabout. Sorry, approval to amend the purchase order of 2022 PO-19 KCDA and related changes to change order one.
All right, Mayor, I'll second that. Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to the grant application approval. This is the Raze Grant for the Jones-John Lainer Trail Road Corridor Project. And Mr. Freiberger?
So we had prepared a grant application last year under this program, which council brought to you and, and requested permission to submit, and you authorized matching funds for that. This is the current round of this. There'll be one more again in, in 2024 as well. Richie Coleman has been interning for the city. He's a master student at Syracuse University, lives in San Diego, retired lieutenant colonel in Marine Corps. Richie's become an expert on these programs. He's been attending all of the, all of the boot camps, they call them, that allow you to learn how to best apply for these programs. I signed up for them all, but I haven't had the time to attend them, but he has. And one of the things we ran into last year, we couldn't actually submit the Raze or the Rural Grant that we came back again later on, another program, because of what they call a benefit-cost analysis that they require. The rules on that are pretty stringent, and we just couldn't meet it, according to the consultant I was using to prepare that for me. So Richie appended, attended a specific boot camp for benefit-cost analysis, and he thinks he's got the magic bullet. So Charlie and I have talked about this extensively, and we want to give him the opportunity to do that. And it'll take the usual bunch of my time to, to support him on that. The good thing is, is a lot of what we did last year is usable. I went through it tonight, as a matter of fact, in getting ready for this. And about 80% of the things that I wrote in the original application, I can cut and put paste in the new one. And so we'll be able to submit that. So the request tonight is just to request your permission to submit this grant application. And I do have one minor modification of it. I've requested that you grant me the authority to sign and submit the application. I'd like to modify that and have myself or City Administrator Charlie Bush. Reason being, I'm actually going to be on vacation the day this is due, and we're getting so close to that date, I'm skeptical that I'll have it 100% by the time that's required to submit it. That way Charlie can do that as well. So this one is very time-sensitive. I do apologize for bringing all, all of these tonight, but it's, you know, that, that season. And grants are going to be coming at you quite a bit this year to try to support these projects. So, thank you.
If I may, that provision for Charlie to sign, that's already in this amendment, I would correct? Or do we need to do a separate resolution for that, or?
I, I would just request that whoever makes the motion, Mark Freiberger or City Administrator Charlie Bush, that's simple.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions? What does the council like want to do with this?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize Public Works Director Mark Freiberger or Charlie Bush to sign and submit the IIJA Raze Grant application for the Jones-John Lainer Trail Road Corridor Project.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owens, for the grant application approval of the Raze Grant for the Jones-John Lainer Trail Road Corridor Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, the proposed amendments for the accessory dwelling unit regulations. And this is Mr. Coleman.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Sorry, I'm toggling back and forth between two Adobe Acrobat. I've got two things coming up, and so I wanted to get to the, the correct one. So this is the accessory dwelling unit regulations amendment request. As you recall, back a couple of years ago, we passed an accessory dwelling unit ordinance that stipulated, under strict conditions, how one may construct an, an accessory dwelling unit in the city. And what that process is, is it requires that the property owner apply for an accessory dwelling unit permit from the planning department and be approved before applying for a building permit for, for the accessory dwelling unit. One of the conditions amongst many of the regulations for accessory dwelling units is that the owner must occupy the, the ADU in order to apply for the ADU, the ADU permit. So everything was going well and good until the spec builders, so if somebody is building a house on spec, that means on speculation. So those are homes that are built by builders that's not intended for anybody, you know, in the building company to, to live in, but to sell on the open market. That's what most of our new houses are. We've got, you know, a handful of, you know, custom houses is the opposite of a spec house. You know, in the custom house, somebody hires a architect or designer to, to draw up and then hires a builder to build it. A spec house is, you know, the builder submits the building permit application along with, you know, several other similar houses in a neighborhood. And they build the houses and expect somebody to, you know, buy the house on speculation. So because of the way the ADU regulations are written, the homeowner must live there in order to get an ADU. BYK submitted a request to allow the builder to build an ADU with the single-family home that's under construction. And, you know, so first, when he came in to ask about can we build ADUs with our spec homes, I said, I guess not, because you're not going to be the owner occupying it. So it was a bit of a conundrum. So they requested a code amendment, and we brought it to the Planning Commission to discuss. That would put a caveat regulation in the, in the municipal code that states all the other conditions really apply. It just says, and this is what's being presented to the council for their approval, it says, in effect, the spec homes can be built with an ADU, but the buyer has to recognize that there's an ADU, and they have to live in the unit, and they must submit a copy of a recorded covenant to the planning department and have it recorded. So it's all the same thing, all the same requirements that a homeowner of a, you know, single family, existing single family would have to do. This just allows the, the spec builders to put ADUs in their properties. And I don't know if all of the, if you've looked at all of the documentation on this and the, the online verbal testimony, the, I, I know what the concern would be that, you know, a spec builder might build every house with an ADU. And that's not addressed in this, and it just wasn't, it wasn't really considered necessary is kind of why we got to this place without having a requirement saying, like, only a third of them maybe. And that was based on the testimony from the, the builder saying, well, that's not what we want to do. That's not the kind of product that we think would sell. It would be more or less self-regulatory. Some of the other benefits that were brought up during this proposed, during this process is when a neighborhood's being built and, and ADUs are built in there, as people are buying into this neighborhood, they're already there as they're being built, and they understand that homes being offered by the builder could potentially have ADUs, because everyone, you know, they should have the option to, to do so themselves. So they're actually built into the, the landscape of the new subdivision, which is slightly different, but probably very different in some, in other people's minds about, like, you know, you get an existing neighborhood and people are adding ADUs, that's changing your neighborhood. Whereas in the case of a new neighborhood, you know that these are being built as part of the new neighborhood, and that's what you're buying into as the, as the purchaser in that neighborhood. So that was the long and short of the discussion that the Planning Commission had. When we originally made these ADU regulations, we just didn't think of what, the possibility of the rules. We didn't think of new spec homes when we were designing the regulations. So it was, when it was brought up to us and brought to the Planning Commission, everybody was kind of like, huh, yeah, I guess we didn't think about that when we wrote the rules. So there was a lot of discussion about it, but ultimately, the Planning Commission felt like this, this proposed change is in line with what they had envisioned during the original process, but was kind of left out. And so what we have is basically four lines of change to the ADU code. And all it really says is spec homes may have an ADU built with them. Prior to the sale, the spec home builder shall notify the prospective purchasers in writing of the limitations on ADUs and the requirements of Chapter 17-100 Sidewally Municipal Code, which is the chapter that regulates ADUs, including pointing out to the new buyers that there is an owner occupancy requirement. It also states that during the closing process of the sale, covenant stating that the owner resides at the property shall be signed by the purchaser and recorded with the Skagit County Auditor. And then, of course, that, that covenant needs to be returned to the planning department after it's recorded. And those are the extent of the changes in this ordinance as proposed.
Any questions for Mr. Coleman? Mr. Allen?
John, just a couple. Number one, this seems to be pretty fairly complicated. I would like to see it come back for a second read. Are they trying to change the parking regulations where each unit has to have two parking spots?
No, as I said, well, first, to answer your first part, this was just requested as a first read. We weren't asking for any action tonight. And second, none of the other ADU regulations have been changed. It's just the, the simple fix of, of allowing ADUs in spec homes. So it still has the requirement for owner occupancy on site. It still has a requirement for one additional parking space for the ADU, in, in addition to the required parking spaces for the single-family home. Still has the same size limitations and aesthetic requirements. Still has the same size limitations and aesthetic requirements. So, none of the other regulations have changed, it's just like the regular ADU regulations, it just applies now to the potential for spec homes.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm sorry, I don't want to rush into this because it's going to have a conceivably a large impact on Cedar Willie, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Kestie?
My concern was with the parking as well and policing. So, who is going to be going around and making sure that the, you know, the owner actually is there, and what kind of, what does that look like for the code enforcement or whomever will be doing that? And then the parking, because, you know, it's by the bedrooms, so then how many cars? And are we going to be, when there are more cars than what should be there, what are we going to do? And I would really like them to look at so that it's not so much taken advantage of. I would like to see something in there with developers and how much we would want to have within different areas laid out.
Is there one particular thing that I should address? So, the parking, so the parking is, every house, ADUs are allowed in the mixed, sorry, in the residential five and the residential seven zones. Two off-street parking spaces are required for all our seven houses regardless of whether there's an ADU. Most, the vast majority of houses that are built has a two-car garage, especially on spec-built homes. And then we have a requirement that says that you need 25 feet of parking in front of all two-car garages, in front of all garages. So, not only are they required to have two parking spaces in the garage, they're required to have two exterior parking spaces as well. So, on top of that typical parking requirement for a single-family house, there also, if there was an ADU, they would be required to have an additional one parking space to, for the person living in the ADU. So, typically, there's a requirement, absolute minimum for three for a single-family house, what practically turns out to is a requirement for five parking spaces. And the reason we require that there's outside parking out front of garage doors is because the majority of us don't actually park our cars in our garage. We park our motorcycles or our stuff in the garage. That's just the way people are, and not everybody uses their garage. So, that's why we have that already requirement for two in every regular single-family house. So, this change doesn't change any of the parking requirements, this is the parking requirements as they are, the same as they always have been for ADUs and single-family homes.
But if we're using them for potential developments, and you see how already are the different developments that are already set up, parking is awful, and then I just am wondering, who's going to be looking out for that to make sure that that one-bedroom apartment that they have for the ADU really actually has three people living in there with everyone having a car, and who would be policing that? Would be my concern.
So, we police the owner occupancy requirement. It's, I believe, on the edge of unconstitutional to tell people how many parking, how many cars they can have. So, we don't police and say, you have got a two-bedroom house, you can only have two cars. In fact, you know, homeowners associations might be able to do that kind of thing, but we can't restrict the number of vehicles that somebody has. And our parking regulations, as I stated, are not necessarily based on the number of bedrooms, it's based on the, every single-family house is required to have two parking spaces, and then four total if they have a garage, and then an additional one for the ADU. We do, in the apartment districts, our 15 zone, require, based on bedrooms, and multi-family units are based on bedrooms, but single-family units is just a straight two off-street parking spaces per, and, you know, that has nothing to do with our ADU code. Single-family neighborhoods generally, not always admittedly, but generally have local collector streets where there's on-street parking associated with it, where there is place for people to park on the street if they have more than one vehicle, and then Dan and his crew are tasked with chasing those cars around if they stay there too long, or if they try to park their RV, or their boat, or their construction equipment associated with the, you know, somebody that lives there, like, you know, so that's part of the policing that goes on in all residential neighborhoods. And as you know, in multifamily, they generally have parking lots that is theirs to address. It's, you know, way off topic from where we are with ADUs, but just kind of covering the concept of parking in general. And because they're in those multifamily zones, you're parking in parking spaces, that's why we do it more based on bedrooms as opposed to just two per unit like we do with the residential family neighborhoods. Also, in residential family neighborhoods, you've got larger lots where you can expand your driveway, you see many people, you know, pave additional next to their driveway for parking their RV or boat or something like that, or a third car, or a fourth car, jet skis, all sorts of stuff in single-family neighborhood, in single-family larger lots. So, there'd be kind of the same concept with this, but we do require one additional parking space for each ADU unit.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, Councilman Avaka.
John, I was, when I first read this, I was kind of looking at it from both sides, and it seemed like an 800 square foot ADU with four people living in it could get pretty big and extensive. At the same time, when I see ADUs built, they usually don't quite match the home the way it is laid out, and I see how, for, like, we're talking affordable housing, and a lot of people run to apartment buildings, and apartment buildings usually densify people at a cheaper rate. But an ADU ran by the landlord seems like it would be a reasonable option for that as far as like allowing people that don't have as much for rent, or don't have as much or starting out at a company or whatnot, to move into a neighborhood. The hope is, yeah, not to see it completely densified, but I don't think people moving or buying a home in a neighborhood and looking at it completely densified would maybe choose to buy the home there, so it'd lower the property value overall. Is, I mean, with the, our own ordinance, in line with state ordinance, we don't really cap how many ADUs can be out there, it's upon the Planning Commission. So, technically, if somebody was in a crunch, or the city was in a crunch, and housing became a thing, or people wanted supplemental income, almost every house could build an ADU, but they all could look like crap and, or bad in the end, I would imagine. So, what do you think about this proposal? I guess is my overall question on just a vision of how these neighborhoods would look.
So, what's interesting, there's a couple of topics that you've brought up there. One is, you know, the value of a neighborhood. So, adding an ADU has additional value because now you can look at it, you know, you've got more square footage at a minimum. So, whether you use it as, you know, just part of your single-family home and you don't use it as an ADU, it's more square footage, and that provides more value. Or there's, of course, the case where you have somebody living in the residence as an ADU, and then you're capturing money from that. So, now you're getting rental income, so that provides, you know, a home with an ADU is going to have a higher resale value than a exact same home without that ADU attached. So, it does actually increase the value of that property, and how that overall affects the neighborhood values is unseen. Typically, the higher value of the property is going to bring up the property values of all of the neighborhood. Now, there's complicating factors that you've brought up too, so it's hard to say how it affects them. There's not enough ADUs out there to really, at least for us, to be able to study how the ADUs are affecting property values. But theoretically, it should lift the value, whether or not that's true or not remains to be seen. Second, you asked, you know, how does that fit into the vision? So, the one really positive part of, building an ADU is part of the original development, as I mentioned earlier, is that it is part of that community as it's being developed, and as people are buying homes there, they know that this is the potential. It also, they'll be built all by the same spec builder. So, when you see the spec home being built, several spec homes being built in a row, they all have a similar flavor and feel, so they, it seems like a cohesive neighborhood. Similarly, and this is one of the arguments that BYK brought up, is they would be building the ADU to match the house. Maybe not like a little mini-house version, you know, same color and paint job and look everything, but it would complement and really feel like it's part of the neighborhood, just like if they were to build a detached garage as part of a new house, they would make it look like it was, belonged with that house. Whereas, you're right, some existing houses, they might just convert an existing metal building into a ADU, and it doesn't really look similar to the house, it was just, you know, somebody put in a, an inexpensive metal building at some point, and then they decided, oh, let's make that an ADU because we don't use that space, or we can make more money using it as an ADU, or whatever. The idea of having the new neighborhood and all the amenities built at the same time is alluring because it does have more cohesive neighborhood feel, but I hope that answers your question.
I think, I think it would help for people coming in to rent a place for 800, 1,200 bucks without the high rent cost, and then knowing that it's not going to be taken advantage of because the landlord's right there. So, you get really loud neighbors, or people that are disrespecting the place, or causing a lot of trouble, you're tending to have the neighbor on-site, or the landlord, taking care of that right away. So, I do like that feature of affordable rentals that people come into the community could have, as well as not letting it go out of hand. That's my personal opinion.
You bring up another interesting point, is in a new neighborhood, everybody's pretty excited, like, I got a brand-new house, like, who wouldn't just be over the moon about that? And there tends to be a higher level of care associated, and just attention paid to the properties. So, it kind of feels like, and, you know, there's no, there's no hard science behind this, but it kind of feels like anybody that's building ADUs in a neighborhood like that would try harder to make sure that the impacts of an ADU would be addressed, and, you know, make sure that whoever they're renting to is really a good neighbor, because everybody's new to the neighborhood and excited to live there, and everything looks nice and shiny, and want to keep it that way.
Right, thank you, Chuck. Councilwoman Diamond?
I actually have no issue with the ADU concept as a whole. I think it would provide opportunity for some, you know, for people to be able to help their aging parents, or even their children trying to get a fresh start out of school and kind of being on their own. I mean, there's just a lot of different opportunities, friends and family that they can help or rent out, or whatever the need might be. I do think that we do need to put some sort of cap on it, though, just as a standard, because although we have builders coming in and saying, that's not our plan, new builders can come in and have other plans, or they could change their mind. I mean, you never know, right? Like, anybody, anything can change. So, I do support the concept and the change, I just think that there should be a little bit of criteria in it, whether it be a third of them, or whatever it might be, so it's kind of planned out and that we've got that kind of stipulation, so it doesn't turn into every single one, because in theory, I mean, it could actually happen. And so, I just think that as a city, we should be aware of the impact that that could also have. So, I support the idea, I just think that it should have a little bit of guidance around it.
I would support that too, if there was some sort of, you know, just range or idea.
Do you want to see him bring this back then with that?
Look, Mayor, that would be my wish, is we don't need to rush into it tonight at first.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Councilman Allen, I was just asking if the council wanted to see John Coleman bring back this proposed amendment with the limiting how many ADUs can be built.
More clarification?
Exactly.
John, correct me, or Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is there any stipulation within the neighborhoods about how many ADUs can go up, or is it like every house in a neighborhood could, in theory, put up an ADU if they were to choose to? Or is there like 50% in a neighborhood, or?
There's no limits.
Is, are we able to establish those limits, or is there a state guideline that prevents that for some reason? I know that they put out, that we, that we put out the ideas, I think that was moving through, I don't know if it did get passed, but?
Not to the best of my knowledge, there is no, there is no rules to say that you can limit ADUs entirely. Like, that you can, there are no rules saying that you can limit ADUs to, you know, a third or 50% or something like that of any neighborhood.
Yeah, how would, how would you write something like that if you were to put up something? Would it be per building development, or neighborhood, or in the city? I mean, like, you know, if you densify it all to that couple of blocks, and everybody got ADUs, but these blocks didn't, would that constitute, or is it like every other home?
There's, it would be, it would be challenging, but there's a lot of ways to do it. Right now, we limit duplexes to you can't have any, every third lot, and that was the idea to like kind of keep it to at least, you know, just one-third of the neighborhood. But sometimes, sometimes that means that there might only be two duplexes within a square mile of each other, but there, if they were neighbors, they wouldn't be able to do so, or within two houses of each other. So, it does have an unintended impact on the occasional person. So, I might be more inclined to say within, you know, a neighborhood, or a, within a new development. One thing, I'm going to go off on a little sidebar here as relates to this ordinance. So, the work that we did on this ordinance is specifically to address ADUs at spec homes. That was the work that was done. So, if we were to go beyond the spec home discussion, we would have to do more, we would have to kind of go backwards a little bit on this. So, what it would be easier for, would be probably easier, I guess is the right word, is to say, maybe not address all of the ADU situation, but maybe just keep it within the spec home changes that we're talking about, and then we could just come back next time and review this ordinance. I think we'd still have, the city council would have a public hearing on it because there is a slight change before acting. But what I could propose is something to the effect of limiting spec homes to be built, ADUs no more than one-third of the plat, on which the, within one final plat. So, that would be specific to something new, and maybe I'd throw in plats approved after 2023, or 2022, something like that.
Because it's my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, a property owner that were to purchase one of those spec homes in the future would still have the right to build an ADU in the future, but this is just to ensure that in the future we don't have developers come in, and because it, there is no cap, all of a sudden we have, you know, this is all single-family homes, and all of a sudden we have multiple families every, you know, and so we're really increasing that density level, and so this just allows us to kind of have a little bit of protection in that, is my thought.
I think, I can see a mental jujitsu way around that, yeah. If we say spec home builders are limited to 30% of the final plat, so, we're actually saying specifically spec home builders. So, once they're no longer spec- So once they're no longer spec homes and, you know, they're just homes that have been sold to somebody and they're not being built, they've already been built. So then they're no longer a spec home, they're just a regular home and then the AD, regular ADUs can then apply later.
Councilman McGough, did you have a question?
I might put something to clarify that though.
I just thought it was a good analysis and I'm supportive of it as well.
Okay.
I also had a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure if I missed it in the packet or not, but if the developer did this with an ADU, would they also pay the impact fees of the single family plus the impact fees of the ADU or just the, the one?
Uh, yeah, they'd still pay the ADU impact fees and they'd still have to get an ADU permit. Um, it would just, just open the door for spec builders to actually have the opportunity to do so, to follow all the same rules as all the other ADU builders. Um, it just, the way it was written, the door was closed to spec builders period to provide ADUs associated with the house that they build.
Thank you. Um, the other question I had was on that fact sheet that the mayor sent out, there was one House bill or SB 5235 that says it bans owner occupancy provisions. If something like that were to pass, how would that impact us?
Well, it depends on how it passes, the, the final passage at the legislature. If it states clearly that any cities that already have, um, regulations that ban owner occupancy must get rid of that, then we'd have to get rid of it. Um, if it's unclear about it, then we'd have to, uh, have Nikki look at it and see what the AWC thinks and get some opinions about how that would affect our, our owner occupancy requirement. I'm pretty sure that the legislature, if they pass something like that, they're going to try to address it retrospectively because they, they see that a vast majority of jurisdictions that allow ADUs already have, um, owner occupancy requirements and that's why they're doing this is because they're seeing those owner occupancy requirements as limiting the amount of ADUs that are being built. And so they're trying to encourage ADUs to be built and thus addressing the, uh, what's blocking more ADUs from being built. So I suspect that that would be included in the intent of any legislative bill to kick out our owner occupancy requirement. But this is the fourth run in a year that they've taken at putting that into the ADU rules and, uh, the previous three have failed. So hopefully, or perhaps this won't change. We just don't know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes. Councilman Burns?
On note, SB 5235 is on the Senate floor calendar, so it's very possible we will have to contend with that. We'll see. Um, I guess I wanted to give my two cents here. As I was reading through this, I also thought about if a cap was required and kind of weighed back and forth, whether someone, a spec home builder could actually sell an entire neighborhood full of homes with ADUs. And I guess at one point that might be financially feasible. Um, so I'm not in opposition to putting a cap on that. Um, do you think one third is a relatively reasonable number to go with?
Um, that's very similar to our duplex regulations. Um, and I just don't remember the, I don't remember BYK's testimony, uh, offhand, so I probably shouldn't say, but I, I do recall that they did mention that they didn't anticipate the doing, I, I kind of want to say they were thinking about a third, but you know, market's going to really dictate that. And, and you're right, it just, it seems like it would be hard to sell in a neighborhood entirely full of ADUs, but who knows?
Okay. Well, I was just curious, I guess in part as well, what their plan was, but one third seems reasonable to me.
Okay, so this is a first read and this will be coming back to you, I'm assuming on the eighth. Is that correct?
At the next council meeting.
Yes, okay, so we will be looking at this, um, on the eighth then, I'm guessing. Moving on to item number six, the proposed amendment to Title 17 of the Seeger Woolley Municipal Code to Address Alcohol Production Establishments, Ordinance 2044-22. And this again is a first read.
All right. Let me toggle back to my other memo here. All right. So, um, the alcohol production establishments, uh, proposed regulations as proposed were born out of a conversation with the, the business committee of, of the council, trying to address, um, some issues, uh, that were affecting economic development. So we, Seeger Woolley's the only city I know of without a, a brew pub in town. And, um, part of the reason is, uh, right now breweries are only allowed in the industrial zone. And, you know, that started back in the day when, you know, you think of like Schlitz Brewing or, you know, if you see Laverne and Shirley, you know, they've got this giant brewery that's city blocks long and that's how beer was produced. Now, obviously things have changed and you've got microbrews and, um, the impacts of breweries can be, um, much less and actually desirable to have in commercial areas, um, and not necessarily need to be limited to industrial zone. And then also part of the problem of having breweries in the industrial zone is the industrial zone bans things like restaurants and, uh, any associated retail. Uh, you're only allowed 5% associated retail in the industrial zone. So if you think of a brew pub, well, you can't have a tasting room that's more than 5% the size of the whole brewery. That could be very small. So we wanted to address some of those issues and it started out just thinking about brew pubs and wanting to allow them to, to have the, the pub part with the, and then of course the associated, you know, selling of, uh, cooler of beer and, and T-shirts and then of course you see brew other, some brew pubs have like recreation areas where, you know, outdoor seating and, and, uh, you know, cornhole and these sorts of things. And that just isn't allowed in the industrial zone. So we wanted to address that. And then as we were going through the process, um, the, you know, staff figured out, well, we should probably address, you know, wineries and, and distilleries too. Distilleries are still kind of a smaller thing, but they're, they're growing in popularity. Uh, so Nicole McGowan, our assistant planner, thought, oh, let's address all of these. And she came up with the term of alcohol production establishments. And that's very different than alk, uh, than alcohol serving establishments, which are defined as bars. So completely different things. So what the planning commission looked at is all of the, all of the positives and negatives of brew pubs in not just the industrial zone. And we thought like, well, where do we want these sorts of things? Well, we want to make sure that they're in the mixed commercial zone because that seems like the most appropriate place to have a brew pub. But industrial zones also seems okay. And then how about the central business district? It's a commercial zone. So would we want a brew pub in the central business district? And, you know, as we discussed each of it, we thought, well, yeah, we'd love to have one in the CBD. That's where we want people to come and shop. However, you know, there was some trepidation about what if it's a big brewery? And like, okay, well, let's make sure that it's more like restaurant and bar with a little bit of brewery in the CBD. And then if it's in the industrial zone, well, let's make sure that, you know, we're not just putting a giant restaurant play area in the industrial zone. So we put some limits on the, some limits on the recreational pub part of it and made the requirement that more of it be actual and, you know, brewing part. And then in the mixed commercial, we said, let's kind of find a balance, right? And we give a little bit more leeway there. Um, uh, the planning commission had a lot of good discussions about this. We had feedback from, uh, people that are interested in, uh, creating a brewery and have experience in other places. We've had interests, we had input from somebody who is looking at doing, using the byproducts of breweries for their wine and beer, wine and, uh, distilling purposes, maybe not in the city, but it affected their business. So we got feedback from people actually in the industry. And that's why what you have in front of you tonight is an ordinance that allows breweries, wineries and distilleries in three districts, three zoning districts, each one specifically tailored to the size and impact, uh, in each of those. And I already described, uh, you know, more and, more of the industrial part in the industrious, industrial neighborhood, more of the restaurant, bar, tasting room area if it's in the central business district and then in the mixed commercial zone, kind of a balance. And that's the long and short of this one.
Questions? Councilman Allen?
Uh, John, just a question. Can you, can we limit how many barrels of beer they'll produce or whiskey or wine or whatever?
The planning commission had a long discussion about that. They started to go in that direction and, um, there was some findings that, one, we don't really know enough about the industry to, to determine what, what would actually be. We started to go down that road and we're kind of like, well, we don't really know what the appropriate amounts would be. Um, and, you know, one planning commission brought up, you know, what if, and then what if a business wants to grow and now they're limited by our fairly, what could be, can, can, uh, could be determined to be arbitrary barrel limits? Uh, so we scrapped that direction and did, uh, more percentages of, of restaurants to, uh, brewing or production, I should say, and, uh, and then size limits to, to pare down, you know, so we didn't have something massive in the central business district.
Yeah. Because I went up to Bird's View yesterday to get my hair cut and I had to stop at the Bird's View Brewery and a nice sandwich and a, a nice cold beverage. So anyway, you know, I have no problem, you know, I don't think we're going to create any Budweisers in town or anything, so.
And if we do, they go in the industrial zone and we'd be happy to have them.
Bingo. Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, Councilman Owen?
Yeah, I just had a question for John. Are you, are you talking about micro, uh, microbreweries?
Uh, this would apply largely to, to microbreweries, brew pubs.
Are those licensed, uh, have a license from the liquor control board?
Uh, if they're serving alcohol, they will, yeah.
If they're selling it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think that's under the control of the state because my neighbor, he had all this stuff ready and they wouldn't give him a license. So he had to go out of business. But I don't know that, I, I think those micro, uh, microbreweries are controlled by the state liquor control board. I don't know what we have to do with it.
We just wanted to make sure that, um, if somebody wanted to have one in our industrial, central business district or mixed commercial zone, that our allow, our rules allowed for it because currently they do not.
No, I mean, anybody bootlegging is not, you're not, you're not going to know about it anyway.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Burns?
Um, wanted to say that I listened to the planning commission meetings a couple days later when I'm at work doing something mindless sometimes or at home. And I appreciated the discussions. I thought this was very well planned out and thought out going through the different property types. I'm glad that you didn't choose to put a restriction on the amount of production because I don't want to hold them back from making a profit from these businesses. Um, I would definitely appreciate seeing, uh, one in the area regardless of where they choose to be or the size, but I just wanted to say thank you for approaching it thoughtfully and thinking through all the options.
Okay. Again, all right. Again, this is a first read and so this will come back to you at another council meeting. Moving on to item number seven, the funding of the North Star Project Resolution 111923. And again, this is a first read.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. So, and council. So this item this evening is a continuation of a couple of previous conversations that councils had, uh, one that Mayor Johnson provided at a work session and then a follow-up from Skagit County, uh, officials at the last meeting. And so this is really the, the next piece of the conversation. At the end of the Skagit County presentation, there were a couple of options put out there for the council to potentially consider as policy options. And I went ahead and added, uh, a couple of, a couple additional options as well to, to the list and the background information. So essentially it's, uh, possibly pool and allocate 1590, this is House Bill 1590 funding. I included a copy of the bill as well, uh, through the county notice of funding availability that was mentioned in their presentation. And the request is about, is for 40% of the city 1590 funds and those are more allocated for operations, less for capital. Um, to, to go to that, that's about a hundred thousand a year. In reality, Kelly gave me some numbers. It's, it's been more like 90 to 95,000. So if we were to do this, we'd write into the interlocal agreement 40% if that's what the council wanted to do and make sure the number was whatever it was. So that's option one. Um, option two, um, to collaborate funding where the city directs funding and contracts with agencies. So that would be more of a hands-on approach for the city. Uh, the downside of that is, is just staff support for that. That's an administrative effort for us to manage all that. So, uh, that's something to consider. You also lose the economies of scale of working within the region and leveraging resources across the region. Um, the third is provide alternative direction. So certainly there, there may be some things we missed here. And the fourth is to just do nothing at this time. Um, we do have 1590 funds, so, you know, at some point, um, you know, we may want to spend those. Um, so just laid that out. I included the county presentation as background. Really, we're just looking to get involved in a conversation with you on this to figure out, we, we have a request from the region, uh, to figure out, you know, what our response is going to be. And with that, happy to take any questions the council may have and see where we go. We are recommending, uh, collaborating with the North Star Project, the NOFA process, which was the first option I mentioned, pooling funds.
Okay. Ms. Maka?
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may. Um, I was just curious on, on the timeline for, um, duration. I know that a lot of times places have a projected cost. So like, um, if you, if you're believing you're going to take in for four years a hundred thousand, then you are able to spend a hundred, 400 in, in being able to do that. Is, I didn't see that in there though. Is that something that is, is in there and, and it seems like that would be beneficial if we did go with this, if that was?
Yeah, the, the next step, if you were interested in going down this rule, road of pooling funds would be an interlocal agreement. So we would bring that back to you and that would be more detail, uh, between the various jurisdictions. Uh, talking with Mayor Johnson today, uh, the mayors have had this conversation about timeline as well, I believe literally in the last 24 hours or so. And they've talked about putting a three-year limit on the initial interlocal agreement. Um, so that, that is what they are thinking and that is likely the proposal we'd receive as an interlocal agreement.
And then do we have opportunity for projected outcome on costs such as like, I mean, that would pretty much leave 1.8 million, um, over a 10-year run with this tax that would be left for the city? Is that something that we would see as a 1.8 or we would only be able to spend based upon what we have in the account?
Uh, we, well, if, if we did it ourselves, is that sort of the pointer reference there?
The remaining's 40%.
Yeah, the remaining, uh, well, the remaining, there's the 40% we, if we allocated it, there'd be the 60.
Remaining 60%.
Yeah. Yeah, so the 60% has other limitations on it. A lot of it's capital related, but there's a long list of stuff in the bill that, that we could spend it on. Uh, we would be able to look at any number of ways in which we spent that. We could spend it sort of year upon year. We could do longer-term contracts. We could do a big project or, or two potentially. Uh, we could potentially look at issuing debt with this backing the debt, uh, as, as, as an option to build, build something, uh, some capital.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Okay. Uh, in regards to the funding for the North Star Project, I personally would be in favor of us sending our money to the local agencies ourselves. I find it rather disturbing that in the summary information you provided to the council that it states this option would require significant additional administration for which the city does not have the capacity amongst the current staff. I realize that as a council member, I am not to direct the city staff, but when I see that the current city administration has the capacity to operate the Seeger Woolley Academy, I can assume they would be able to find the time to write a check to an organization that would better benefit the taxpayers of Seeger Woolley. It is my belief that these one-size-fits-all agencies popping up in neighboring communities have been throwing thousands and in some cases millions at the housing and homeless problem, offering handouts and not hand- problem, offering handouts and not handups, therefore creating more theft, crime, and drug use in the communities across our state. And I feel we can make a bigger impact helping proven agencies by cutting the check directly to them.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Oh, I was going to ask how much the administrative costs are for North Star. You know, because in their presentation, they discussed option two where we have more direction as to what that goes to. But on their, so on their list, for example, was family promise. Well, what would be the different, what, what kind of administrative costs are we actually paying through that wouldn't go directly to North Star? Or, I'm sorry, to family promise? You know, I just, I want to make sure that what we're spending in taxpayers' dollars are going directly to help the people and not an administrative cost.
Yeah, we, we could run that down for you. I don't have that information this evening. The mayor's been at the table, may, may have more detail on that at this point. I'm not sure.
Okay. So it, it sounds to me, but I will get clarification because that's a very good question. But it sounds to me that the monies that we do give goes to the project itself. These individuals that are operating actually work for the county. So their funding is coming through the county, their paycheck's coming through the county. But I can clarify that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I would think that it does seem like even with that 60%, putting up some sort of learning center, some sort of educational trades program center and not focusing as much on housing, because that's what a lot of the cities in the past have done or doing right now. And the problem is, is growing because they're, they're housing a, a situation where people may not have the trades or whatnot to sustain their own housing once they get in. So I think the North Star is an awesome program from what I've saw of it and a three-year window of seeing that move forward. But that other 60%, I would think going towards a trades program, education program to build up people so that they can go on their own and start producing back in the economy and helping fund even more things through what they do.
All right. Councilman Burns?
I would have to echo Councilman Lavaca. I do think the North Star Project sounds like a great idea. I really do. I, I think that working with our surrounding communities could really be very beneficial to us. I think going it alone isn't going to solve our problems. I definitely want to see this money managed very responsibly from them. And from what I see, it sounds like they, they've got a good foundation going. And I appreciate the work that Mayor Johnson and the other mayors have done in trying to work through differences and find a way to work together. I am definitely in favor of giving this a three-year shot and seeing what we can do with it. I believe that is a great idea. I originally was expecting that they were asking for 100% of the funds that we had. So I'm interested to see what we can do with the other 60% that will benefit our community. And I definitely think that finding ways to give people a lift up to make sure that they have the education to fill the jobs that are available in our area or any other life skills that they might need, even if it's just balancing a budget and learning how to keep their books. Not everybody learned that from their parents. Not everybody had a stable upbringing that was going to give them the knowledge they needed to be successful in our community. So I think that looking at those things would be a fantastic benefit to us.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Councilman McCaffrey?
Thank you. I just had one question. On the 1590 funds, are these the ones that have a stipulation that a certain portion has to go directly to building housing?
Yes.
So when we start splitting up, you know, we're giving 40%, keeping 60. On some of the project goals, I noticed that some of that is designed to go into building housing. How would that leave the remaining 60% that we're obligated to use? Like, the percentages are getting like mixed up now. Like, are we required to use the remaining 60 on just housing or can we use it for services as well?
It, it's more limited from a services perspective, but I am looking through the bill right now. I know there's a long list here and so I'm just trying to, to put my finger on it. So it's, I'll just give you the quick rundown. My apologies. I thought I had it, but I did not. So we can get back to you on that portion. This is a first read. So we'll, we'll kind of give you the whole breakdown. I'll just break that out in a separate document. I think that'll be easier than trying to read through the bill live. Yep.
It's actually a good question because I recalled in the bill that actually 60% was supposed to go to housing and the rest was supposed to go to, it could go for maintenance and whatnot. So, yeah, that's a good question. I, it could be simply that North Star is only looking for 40% of what we have to go to housing. So anyway, but it's a good question.
So that 40% out of the total that we have to, that 40% come from the housing requirements? And then the 60 we have, is that up to our discretion to go to services or?
And then the question, of course, would be too, does 20% of that 60?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Good question. All right. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? If not, this will come back to you on the eighth again. And our last item tonight, also a first read, is amending Chapter 1244 of the special events. It's the parades and festivities of Seeger Woolly municipal code. It's ordinance 204123. Again, a first read, and this is Nikki.
Thank you, Mayor. This has actually come at the request of Lager Rodeo. They came to the mayor expressing concerns about injuries caused by candy that is being thrown from moving vehicles during parades. And so they asked if the council would consider passing an ordinance that prohibits the tossing or throwing of candy during parades. Still, of course, allows people to directly hand out the candy, but, but prohibits that tossing or throwing. At the same time, we took the opportunity to correct two sections that had references to code that has been repealed. It didn't show up in track changes, but under the violation section after the word misdemeanor, it used to have a reference to a definition in former Title Eight, or sorry, Title Nine. Title Nine has been repealed and replaced with Title Nine A. And there is a definition of misdemeanor in Title Nine A and in Title One. So we just took out the incorrect reference. This is a pretty straightforward ordinance. If the council has any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions? Just Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couldn't Lager Rodeo just advertise not to throw candy and not make it a, a rule? I mean, it just seems like it's more ordinances. I mean, rather than just?
I can, I can actually answer that. So for the last couple of years, actually, it's been more than that. The Lager Rodeo has requested and actually finally put into the contract that you cannot throw candy because there had been people who had been injured. And still, it was not respected or abided by. So they went and they looked at ordinances at other cities, which actually do have this listed in their ordinance and requested that we, we put this into our parade ordinance. So, yeah, that's where it comes from.
Thanks. It just seems, yeah, throwing candy at a parade's always been, it's kind of like taking the balloons out of the carnival. I don't know.
It's like an 80-year tradition. Lieutenant Dan, do you have a SWAT squad for throwing candy at the Fourth of July organized yet or not?
Well, we used to have a chalk line where kids couldn't go past where they would throw the candy out towards that direction. But yeah, it happens every year. I don't have any specific incident where anybody's been injured, but it is a concern for sure. I, I specifically don't know if a misdemeanor is going to be worthy of that. I'm not sure.
Totally woke.
Yes, yes. My concern in that is you've got children in this parade. Who's going to monitor that when a child decides to throw a piece of candy to their friend? You know what I mean? Like, how do you, how, how is that going to work? Are their parents then going to be liable for that?
No, I, I agree that candy shouldn't be thrown. I just don't know if it's a criminal offense.
Yeah, I just don't think it should be a criminal offense.
I'm not, I'm not sure on that.
For, for clarification, that, the, that piece of the ordinance doesn't have anything to do with the throwing of the candy. It's a violation of that chapter and the misdemeanor language was already in there. It just had a reference to a code that's been repealed.
On the, if I may, Madam Mayor, if I may, on the Fourth of July, I put a camera up on top of one of the floats that was carouseling around and just watched the whole float and watched the whole parade afterwards. But I was in it as well. For some reason, I've been in a couple of these parades since I've gotten into this, which is great. It looked like everybody was having a great time, a hoot and a holler. It was a lot of fun. We had, you know, horses and we had the fire trucks and we just, I didn't see anybody that was like crying from candy getting hit in their face or disappointed by it. I know it's a risk, but, you know, freedom is a risk and there's always potential for, for dangers with that. So it just seems like it's a weird one to put in.
If I, you know, if I may, so when I spoke with the director of Lager Rodeo, one thing that she brought up, and I think it's something that we have to respect, is actually they could be liable. And, you know, so I think just as we as a city would want to protect ourselves, that's what they're looking to do as well. They just want to have some teeth in this and they don't want to have to be liable if somebody is injured.
And this isn't stopping them from like, when you're walking along and you're toss, you're tossing it nicely to the side, that's still acceptable, correct? It's just when you're on your float, you're not chucking it to the kids? Is that what it is?
How do, how do you clarify that language?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Like, how is it?
So the, the ordinance itself says you can't toss it from a motor vehicle or a float or wagon or similar vehicle.
Yeah, you should be able to. Yeah.
I can jump in real quick. Most of what I've been seeing is it's, it's coming from when they're walking alongside other vehicles and bringing them, dropping them in front of the kids. There are some that are probably dropped. And what that's my concern is if they're dropped in, in the pathway of the vehicles and left out there and a kid goes out there. That's kind of what we're out there to try to stop from happening and kicking that candy aside. But yeah, these are all concerns. I just trying to figure out to what, what level.
So, I'm still a little bit confused from the earlier discussion on what would happen to someone that does throw candy, like a 16-year-old, let's say. Like, I'm still, I'm a little confused now on like, what would be?
I believe, and this would be, this is a really good question. And I, and so in my discussion with, and I'm going to have Dottie come because I think these are questions that she can answer for you. So this is a first read. We don't have to do anything with it now. I think that they just wanted to have some teeth. So they wanted to be able, if somebody is very flagrant about doing this, they just want to be able to say, next year, you won't be able to be in the parade because you have violated this ordinance that we've asked you not to violate. So, because everybody fills out a contract and signs it. So they agree not to do that. So, and she has had them do that in the past and still people toss candy. And I actually have seen people who, when the candy is tossed, it comes at them and it hits them in the face. Granted, I don't see it doing, drawing blood or anything like that. It's still dangerous. So I, you know, I think she's just looking for support from, from the city to have a safe parade. So they're not liable.
Okay. That was kind of, if I may, my other question was Nikki, if somebody signs a contract to be in the parade and they say, and they sign that they're not going to throw candy and then they do throw candy, aren't they breaking their contract? I mean, from a legal point of view, isn't the city and the Lager Rodeo protected from that at a contractual? Do we need to pass an ordinance on top of the contractual part of it?
So the contract would be between the Lager Rodeo and its participants, right? The relationship between the city and the Lager Rodeo is one where the city issues Lager Rodeo a permit and says, okay, you can put on this special event. It's your private event and you're going to be liable for anything that happens during this particular special event. You have to get all your insurance. You have to fully indemnify the city and ensure that we're not liable for anything. The contractual agreement between the participants of, of the parade and Lager Rodeo, that's a private civil contract between those two parties. It's a civil matter between them. And so if they were to violate the terms of that agreement, then theoretically, they would have breached the contract. If something happens, then theoretically Lager Rodeo could go after the individuals who caused the injury. However, it's, you know, the reality is Lager Rodeo is the one that is carrying all of the heavy insurance on this, right? So it probably would end up with Lager Rodeo being, well, their insurance probably being responsible for, for something that happened.
Okay. If we made it part of the permit, would that be different than passing an ordinance? Like if we said as part of the permit to have a parade, there can be no candy launching from the, the floats? So that if somebody does do it, that we're not prosecuting a 16-year-old that got excited, but it's part of the permit that, you know, this is the guidelines not to do it?
Yeah, we could find other ways to work this in. The, the criminal provisions in Chapter 1244, they apply to all, to all of the provisions in there regarding special events and permits, right, or, and parades. And so that's what already exists. If there is interest in changing a violation of the special event code to something other than a crime, we can certainly do that. But again, a lot of the provisions that are required to be in a permit are contained in this Chapter 1244.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll get my last two bits in worth and I'll get off. I've been going to that parade for over six years of my life. People are rolling candy out to the curbs right now, from what I see, from where I go. Let's just have government get into everything and take the fun out of everybody for just, I mean, for goodness sakes, what are we going to accomplish? Lager Rodeo tells people in their contract not to toss candy, not to toss things. Let's just be big government and just steal the childhood from people and just be assholes. Okay, excuse me. I'm sorry.
All right. If, I guess Glenn?
I, I agree with Glenn. I've, I've been going to the parade for, I don't know, 62 or three years and it's never been a problem. I don't know why all of a sudden it's, it's a, it's a danger to the kids. Well, the parents should be responsible for their kids. And I've never, I've never seen anybody get hurt from getting hit by a piece of candy. It's kind of, it's kind of a stupid thing to, to get into. I mean, we go to, to a parade to enjoy it and have fun. The kids love it and they, they like the candy. But I've never seen maybe a piece once in a while, but, but I always watch my grandkids and stuff and they know better than to run out in front of equipment. So I don't see any reason to get involved in it.
Okay. Well, I know Dottie wanted to be a part of this and I neglected to call her and I should have done that. And I'll have her come and then that way you can answer your, ask your questions of her. Okay. All right. And with nothing else, I think, left on the agenda, which is fantastic, our next meeting is going to be next week, March 1st. And wow, already in March. Oh, my gosh. At six o'clock. We'll see you then. Have a good week. We're adjourned.